I call to order, this is the regular meeting of the Lennox Township Board of Trustees, Monday, December 5th, 2022, at 6:30 PM. Please join me in closing the meetings.
I, Mr. White, am the supervisor of the United States of America, and to the Republic of Georgia's say, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
We're on meeting agenda.
We have one change to the current meeting agenda, and that is to add a new business, Item G, which is the purchase of a time block from High Tech to install a server.
I make a motion that we approve the agenda with adding on G for High Tech time block.
One second.
I have a motion by trustee Gurley, seconded by Court Candell, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Approval minutes.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes of 11:22, as written.
Support.
I have a motion by trustee Clifford, seconded by Treasurer Hall, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Public announcements. Mr. White.
Good evening. Happy holidays to all. It's one of the more enjoyable meetings that I personally get to do every year is when we bring in our new EMS and our fire professionals and issue them their oath and swear them in and provide them their badges. As EMS professionals, we regard ourselves as members of important and time honored profession, as such, we administer to our employees the conclusion of their probation and oath. The purpose of this oath is to ensure our citizens that we conduct ourselves in a manner that will be a credit to the township and the ambulance authority. With that, I'm going to ask to come forward tonight, four candidates who will receive their oath and their badges this evening, and they'll each bring a member of their family, and they can just come stand behind me here where we'll administer the oath and give them their badges. That would be Paramedic Jason Farah, EMT Zachary Deodro, EMT Zachary Sherman, and EMT John Veloski. Colleagues, if you would, please raise your right hand and repeat after me, or repeat I do after me to the following questions. I recognize at all times I am a public servant, and that ultimately I am responsible for the safety and well-being of myself, of my colleagues, and all citizens. I will accept responsibility for my actions by exhibiting honesty and integrity. I will promote diversity within our organization and ensure fair and open access to all who call for service. I will observe the highest principles of fairness and strive to meet those values, which reflect honor upon the township, the EMS, and myself. I will seek to maintain and improve my professional knowledge, skills, and competence. Now, if you swear to follow and uphold all Department SOPs, county medical treatment protocols, state and federal laws, as well as the state of Michigan and U.S. Constitution. Finally, if you affirm you will not permit or cause any employer, agent acting on your behalf to do anything which would constitute a violation of this oath. Your families will all give your badges just beforehand unless they take a moment and pin them on you at this point. Township Board members and citizens of large, on behalf of the Richmond Lennox Township's ambulance authority, it is my privilege to formally present to you these sworn professionals, who I now attest are fully prepared to serve you and our citizens. Gentlemen, ladies, thank you.
All right, moving on to public comment.
Good evening, John Marino, Scar Fest Grouper. I know that you guys are adopting a food truck ordinance, and we have been using food trucks over there at Scar Fest for two years now. The problem that I see with this ordinance is that, well, there's a few different problems. One of them would be, it's not excluding pre-approved special events, which, if you ask Alatus, he'll probably realize that he needs to add that into the ordinance. The other thing is, there's a time limit of 10 o'clock, which, for special events that are pre-approved by this board, my event goes till 12, so that's another issue that this ordinance doesn't cover. The other issue would be applications. Each food truck applying for an application from this township, I've already gotten approved, and I already have insurance with the names Lennox Township has additional insured. So, there's a lot of issues, I think, with this food truck ordinance that needs to be re-looked at, and I would definitely offer my assistance with Al if he wants to get together and find out a good wording that would be good for this food truck ordinance. Right now, it's a direct violation of my settlement agreement, and if you guys read my settlement agreement, it has concessions in food trailers in my settlement agreement. So, if we adopt this ordinance right now, it's going to directly affect Scar Fest, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Public comment. All right, public hearing, Parks and Recreation Master Plan, private.
Certainly. Lennox Township Draft Parks and Recreation Master Plan Public Hearing Notice. A public hearing is scheduled for December 5th, 2022, at 6:30 PM at the Lennox Township Municipal Offices, 63775 Grashet, Lennox, Michigan, 48050. The purpose of the public hearing is to receive comments on the draft Parks and Recreation Plan prior to adoption by the Township Board of Trustees. Written comments will be accepted at the Township Offices. Oral comments will be heard during the meeting. A complete draft of the Lennox Township 2022 through 2027 Recreation Plan is available for public view and comment prior to the December 5th, 2022, public hearing. Copies of the draft can be reviewed at the Lennox Township Offices during regular Township Business Hours, Monday through Thursday, 8:30 AM to 12 o'clock, noon, and 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM. A draft can also be viewed on the Lennox Township website, www.lenoxtownship.org, for additional information. Contact the Township Clerk, F-5867272085, published October 19th, 2022.
Thank you. All right, item number one, open public hearing, a motion will be entertained.
Make the motion to reopen the public hearing at 6:39.
Support.
I have a motion by trustee Clifford, seconded by Court Candell, all in favor?
Aye.
Case seven.
Evening. The Parks and Recreation Plan is a recorded document by the state under the Department of Natural Resources. It's required in that, in order to apply for Parks and Recreation Grants, you have to have an adopted plan. The state specifies exactly what needs to be in the plan, and the proper procedure you need to follow, this follows that precisely. The state also requires that we have two opportunities for public comment. One is through the survey, we recently, we had a survey out for about seven weeks, we received 97 responses to that, and the second is this public hearing. The document has been available, as the clerk indicated, for review, to my knowledge. I have not received any comments, and I don't know if the clerk's office has either. We're holding a public hearing tonight, if the Township Board decides, I would suggest that at their next meeting, we formally adopt the Parks and Recreation Plan. There's a special resolution that the state has that we need to agree on, so.
All right. Public comment on the draft for Lennox Township's Parks and Recreation Plan. Seeing that there's none, a motion will be entertained, the close of public hearing.
I make a motion that we close the public hearing for the Parks and Recreation Master Plan.
Second.
I have a motion by Court Candell, seconded by trustee Clifford, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, or trustees discussion.
What I see, I don't, I don't see a problem that I would have, wouldn't be heard if it was tabled, so I could be the board, but it looks, it looks good.
Dean, is it possible that we can get a result, the results of the survey?
I think we have most needed survey.
If there's no further discussion, a motion will be entertained upon point of recommendation. All right, I'll make the motion to table it, to adjourn it, based on the point of recommendation, so the proper resolution may be brought forward.
Second.
I have a motion by the chair, seconded by trustee Gurley, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Consent agenda, all items listed on the consent agenda are considered routine by the Township Board and will be enacted by one motion. According to established Township meetings, there will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the board or public soul requests, act, or part of the meeting, in which the chair of the meeting may remove such items from the consent agenda for discussion and consideration under the agenda item number nine above. Approval of the consent agenda shall be a majority roll call vote of those presently voting.
Mr. Supervisor, I bring before you today a bills list in the amount of $354,363.98. I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda and the bills list at $354,363.98, all as presented. Second.
I have a motion by Court Candell, seconded by Treasurer Clifford, and Deputy Court please call roll.
Candell?
Aye.
Connell?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Item 10, unfinished business, water tank relocated, Metro Detroit Magazine advertiser request. So, we came with this back in June, to be brought back from, the deadline is coming up very quickly here, this is the magazine, this is the advertisement request that we brought back in June, it would cost us, it would cost us in total $1,545. This is a magazine that's distributed nationwide, internationally. I think this would be a perfect opportunity to showcase our up and coming growing community.
I have a question. How many months of your life?
This, this is yearly publication.
One year. Is this the hour magazine, the current hour magazine?
No, this is the relocate to Metro Detroit.
So, it will be published one time?
It'd be published one time, thus, and it's printed throughout the year, in the same magazine.
It's any other, goes in the magazine every month, correct?
It's every month or once a year.
No.
The magazines, it's a one-year edition.
Okay, it's probably annually?
Yeah, it's pretty annually, but distributed throughout the entire year.
The same version?
Yes.
Mr. Cassin, did we not do this magazine here, what, four or five years ago?
We did.
Did, I'm only asking, did you feel that this was a worthwhile expenditure?
It was nice to get the word out about Lennox Township, and maybe it was right, I did not receive any feedback from anybody at its end. I, when I talked to the company, I would like to, a few years ago, I said, you know, we'd like to see some metrics, and who our community, our residents might see, and where, I didn't get a response, but.
And when you, in this end, it reads just promoting Lennox Township, so what would be other features that we have in the township?
It'd be promoting everything in the township, if you get what I'm saying. So, it is a full-page presentation, it gives the demographics of the township, we write, basically, an ad promoting our township, and that's what, so we choose what we want to promote. If there's no further discussion, a motion will be entertained.
I will make a motion to approve advertising for one year in the relocate to Metro Detroit magazine at a cost of $1,540.
I'll second that, I have a motion by Treasurer Hall, seconded by the chair, and Deputy Court please call roll.
Connell?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Clifford?
Nay.
Candell?
Nay.
Gurley?
Nay.
All right. Motion fails, item fails. Moving on to item B, Parks and Recreation Trolley Trip. So, after last meeting, I did, we did search in two digital pools, both companies came back, we set the parameter as likewise equipment, so looking for a trolley. We contacted two companies that we know do other trolley services, both of them do not have available, though, for equipment. Now, I know Court Candell's issues regarding paying for the tickets on the township side, so we did up the price to $30 a person, so the township will not be paying for the tickets, but essentially, what we pay for the tickets in the package, the company will be paying for us, if you get what I'm saying here. But we still have the data available to us, and I, so we essentially just paying for transportation.
And this is not just seniors, this is open to all residents?
Yep, open to all residents of both unexamined use.
I would like to make a motion to approve the Charlie Holiday Light Tour Trip, 30 residents, at the cost of $2,400, understanding that $30 per person will be charged to cover the cost of their trip ticket, so the total transportation cost would end up at $1,680. Second.
I have a motion by Court Candell, seconded by Treasurer Hall, and Deputy Court please call roll.
Candell?
Aye.
Connell?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
All right. Number 11, new business, item A, fire station number two, water softener, iron and oil system purchase, Mr. White.
Could you do it again? In front of this evening, the board has two proposals, or, I'm sorry, three proposals for water softeners for our station, actually our fire station number two. That station is on a well, and the water there was very iron-heavy, we had never done anything to treat it, so we're planning to put a softener and a filtration on it, we'll take some of the iron out, spraying that kind of water on the trucks that's kind of heavy with that kind of content, actually is very hard on the vehicles, as far as causing rust and other deterioration, and we're just trying to reduce some of that. You have three bids in front of you, the lowest bid in front of you is from, I believe it was the, I didn't grab my.
The water solution?
Yes. No, what's that?
The water solution, in 27.
No, no, that one, because that did not include.
It does include, like, that is, Larry John.
Then you've got Larry John.
Yes, I'm sorry, thank you very much. I sent down my other paper back there before I came up. So, is Larry John well drilling and repair at $4,224.04? And so, we're recommending that for approval.
Make a motion that we approve the fire station number two water softener, iron and oil system purchase proposal for $4,224 to Larry A. John well drilling repair.
Second.
I have a motion by Court Candell, seconded by trustee Clifford, and Deputy Court please call roll.
I'm sorry, who's the court attorney?
Scott.
Candell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Connell?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Item B, food truck licensing ordinance, oh, Mr. Cassin.
Good evening again. You have in front of you a copy of the food truck licensing ordinance, is really in direct response to a food truck that located down off Grashet, with cars pulling right off Grashet, and it's has a lot of nuisances there, the lighting issues with signage and word parking, there's a quarter John there, and we've had quite a number of problems, but we didn't have an ordinance to regulate it. It's not funny, but United's an ordinance that's got to regulate food trucks in the township, basically, it's a, it's a very liberal ordinance, however, they need to command and submit an application, they need to provide a certain dimension, and they have to agree to provide insurance, and give us documentation that the property owner which they're locating their food truck on has given permission, and there are a few other things, they have to submit to inspections and that. So, it's a step in the right direction, this was tied up after several wrong surrounding communities, it was reviewed by Mr. Addis, his firm, and they had relations with it.
Al, given what was that during the public comments, any agreement before the court, wasn't that superseding this ordinance?
Only as it applies to Scar Fest, and I understand Mr. Mourinho's concern, but there is no carryover, there is no application, the court order is, does not, our rule will not supersede the court order, okay, if we adopt it. Now, there's another approach that can be made, which we may consider, because I did some research on this today while I was stuck out of the court, but they have lots of books, so, I did some research on this today, there is another way to approach it, but I would suggest the following. I would suggest that we consider the proposal of moratorium on food trucks while the board considers this and passes a new ordinance that will apply only to those things that we are outside of Scar Fest. Scar Fest is a, is a court order that will not be superseded by a rule we can pass, so whereas I understand their concern, it's not, okay, I don't like them to be concerned, but it really won't apply to them. Well, you can do one or two things, this is a fair ordinance, and it's a good ordinance, or you can wait and propose a resolution for a moratorium on food trucks, and then we can examine the whole thing, and within a month, pass a new ordinance. Either one is acceptable, meaning, but there's no concern on its effect on Scar Fest. I think the more minor, the proper approach would be to either table this and let the moratorium be proposed, and then design the new ordinance, which will be, which will decide where they can go, what signage they can have, what they're allowed to do, parking lines, and otherwise, make a specific, modern ordinance for food trucks. However, there's nothing wrong with the proposed ordinance, it's the board's choice.
Now, the proposed ordinance does always be a method to reflect changes in the opposing party.
It could be.
How would more to him affect, I know, I saw recently, there's a food truck that parks itself on County Line at 26 Mall Road, at that gas station, and it is in Lennox Township. How does a moratorium on food trucks affect those people?
Same as it affects anyone else. Moratorium means, you don't operate until we address it.
So, we, we have to have somebody go out there and tell them that they're not legally operating and have to leave?
That's right, once the moratorium is, is, once the moratorium is published and approved, then yes. There are two approaches, you can pass what you have here today, there's nothing illegal about it, okay, but you have a number of questions, and Mr. Cassin brought them up, signage, and parking, and traffic, and whatever, moratorium, there are a number of reasons to have a moratorium, and then while you address this, which you will address within, by the time of the next meeting, and you will address the moratorium, and then a new, very specific set of rules that apply to this, but I want to address Scar Fest, it will not affect Scar Fest, none of this will affect Scar Fest. Scar Fest is a court decision and an agreement made that everybody, okay, these are food trucks outside of Scar Fest. Would that need to be specified legally out of that, need to be specified in the new? No. No. In fact, I think that would be a mistake, because you don't want to reopen that agreement, the agreement is the agreement, the court has approved it, and you can't do anything here to supersede it. You can't do anything here to supersede it. I provided Mr. Cass with some documents, which I put together and said, ways to approach this. Again, there's two or three different approaches to food trucks. Nobody's going to ban them or whatever, but you can properly regulate them. There's nothing wrong with what was proposed. It will not affect Scarfest. I want to say that again. However, if you want to take a little more time, consider a moratorium in the next meeting while you put together an approach that designs location and parking and signage and safety, that is another thing. You have choices.
I would be able to talk for that. Martin, can I talk or not? Any discussion from the Board?
No.
I would think the wisest thing for us to do is follow Phil's lead and table it for tonight and put it on next month's meeting agenda for a moratorium. And then that gives us time to get it done the most efficient and proper way. So I would make a motion.
I would agree with that.
I would make a motion that we table the food truck licensing ordinance and put on the January agenda a moratorium on food trucks.
Second.
Who wants to second?
Both of you.
Who's second?
Oh, yeah.
Both of you can.
It doesn't matter.
Alright, I have a motion by Court Candell, second by Trustee Gurley. May Deputy Court, please call the roll.
Candell?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Honnell?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Alright, item C, Community Room Usage Proposal.
Good evening, Adorable Board. This evening, the Supervisor's Office brings forward a request after several inquiries from residents to the township to utilize a community room here at Township Hall. As of right now, we do not have a policy regarding the utilization of the community room. Tonight, the Supervisor's Office has requested the following policy be enacted to allow the residents of Lennox to utilize the community room. This has been presented and put into the board packet. The community room at Lennox Township Hall shall be only available to the residents of Lennox Township and those with a vested interest in Lennox Township. Any political event shall be prohibited in the use of the community room. A member of the Lennox Township office staff must, shall be required to be present during the time of the use. The fee for the use of the community room shall be $25 an hour for a pay rate for the staff member present. If the staff member is a member of the Board or a salary employee, the fee shall go to the senior center program. And this estimated time and payment shall be required at the time of the application for the usage of the community room. The Treasurer and the Supervisor, both concerned, concurring, shall be able to grant special disposition regarding the payment of the fee. At no time, food or drink, with the exception of bottled water and pre-processed snacks, shall be allowed within the community room during the time of usage. The Clerk and the Supervisor, both concurring, shall be able to grant special disposition regarding the allowance of food and beverage in the community room, respectfully submitted. Now, this is something that's been coming forward. At some point in time, you will have an opportunity, once the community center, for the community center and the seniors, you'll have this same program being coming forward, so keep that in mind.
I would make a motion to approve the community room usage policy proposal as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Honnell, second by Trustee Gurley. May Deputy Court, please call the roll.
Honnell?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Item E, 2023 Poverty Exemption Policy Guidelines Application. Mr. Greer.
Alright, good evening. Deputy Chief Assessor here in the Township, Christine, going to step in this evening for her and bring this forward to you. As the Board is aware, and I'm sure many of the residents are aware, this is an annual requirement. We're requesting your adoption of the 2023 Poverty Exemption Policy Guidelines and Application Requirements under the State Quarantined Guidelines of law. If there's any questions, I'll be more than happy to entertain them, but there is a packet involved here for the township, for the members. And once again, this is being brought forward by our Chief Assessor, Christine Lucian.
I would make a motion that the Board of Trustees approves the 2023 Poverty Exemption Policy Guidelines and Application as presented.
Second. I have a motion by Court Candell, second by Trustee Clifford. May Deputy Court, please call the roll.
Candell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Honnell?
Aye.
Item E, 2023 Assessment Change Notices. Mr. Greer.
Once again, members of the Board, I'm going to step in for Christine Lucian, our Township Assessor. This evening, she's asking to bring forward to the Board of Trustees a request for mailing of the 2023 Assessment Change Notices. Attached in your packet, you will find two quotes for mailing the 2023 Assessment Change Notices. Quote quantity is 3,756 parcels. The parcel count is subject to change once an official count is completed. There was two quotes put out. They both returned, or there was, I'm sorry, I believe there was three, but only two came back from Christine's information. The first quote was KCI Communications for $688.40 plus an estimated postage of 1,708.98, totaling out at 2,397.38. Winlock Business Systems responded, 723.52 for the printing, estimated postage, 1,878, totaling out at 2,601.52. Postage estimates are based on vendors' lowest prices and we have a tax sheet for that. After reviewing the proposals, decided to recommend KCI for the printing and mailing of the 2022 Assessment Change Notices. With that, in the past, we have had excellent service with KCI as they have bid in this process before. We are required to retain copies of the Assessment Change Notices for three years. Any questions or concerns, be more than happy to answer.
I make a motion to approve the recommendation of KCI Communications for the mailing of the 2023 Assessment Change Notices in the amount of $2,397.38.
Second.
I have a motion by Court Candell, second by Trustee Gurley. May Deputy Court, please call the roll.
Candell?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Honnell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Item F, 2023 Meeting Schedule Panel.
Should it have in front of you a listing of the Planning Commission, Board Meeting, Recreation Commission, uh, meeting dates for 2023, which coincides with the county holiday schedule, which is also attached to the information. There are two board meetings during the year that do not follow the standard rotation and ironically, the first one is the January meeting because it will be held on Tuesday, January 3rd at 6:30 because we are not working on January 2nd. The second one is Labor Day Weekend. The meeting is going to be on the Tuesday, September 5th as opposed to Monday.
I make a motion that we approve the 2023 Meeting Schedules as presented. Second.
I have a motion by Trustee Gurley, second by Treasurer Honnell. May Deputy Court, please call the roll.
Gurley?
Aye.
Honnell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Aye. No, I can't. Candell?
Aye.
And Reader?
Aye.
Item G, Time Block Purchase Proposal. I'm calling.
Good evening. This evening, I would have been presenting a request to the Board. Last minute, this was an add-on, as requested this evening, came to attention based upon a number of items with us having a server being installed that we are going to more than likely go over our time elements with high-tech communication systems. And we are requesting that the Board consider an additional purchase of time service through high-tech. Currently, they do have a program that is allowing us to purchase an additional 100-hour time block for $13,500. This is a savings of $3,500 off the normal labor rates. Just some statistical information for you. The last time we purchased a 100-hour time block was in May of 2022, this past year. Keep in mind, the reason we eaten up a lot of that time was we have actually installed, I believe, 10 new server stations within the township, so that does chew up time with them in there. There's currently, as of today, 44 hours left on the timeline. The installation of the new server that needs to be installed, and that's actually been part of the budget program for the technology updates that we've done, that is currently estimated right now somewhere between 50 and 70 hours for the installation of that equipment to back up the systems and move the new server into play. So with that, this evening, we are bringing it forward and asking that the Board consider this additional purchase of the 100 hours. This is within the budget and the guidelines.
I would like to make a motion to approve the purchase of a 100-hour time block from high-tech at the cost of $13,500 to help cover the cost of the installation of the new server.
Second.
I have a motion by Court Candell, second by Treasurer Honnell. May Deputy Court, please call the roll.
Candell?
Aye.
Honnell?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
At this point in time, I'd also like to have the Board members be aware and thank Anna Clerk for assisting the Supervisor's Office in getting three bids put up onto the websites and out to the residents in the community that we're going to be putting up. They were up as of December 1st. We have bids now open for the community centers roof system so that we can replace that roof for final installation. We did the emergency repairs, you remember, last year. Now it's time to replace that roof. There's a number of things going along with that. There's an additional bid that was put up for HVAC. All these bids, along with a secondary bid for Township Hall for cleaning services on carpet and so on, all these have been put up under the public forum onto the program in our website. This is so we can have open bidding and clarity across the Board. We look forward to the people coming back and putting those bids in. Those bids will be tallied and brought back to the Board for a final decision in January. But once again, I want to thank the Clerk's Office for putting this together and helping us get it up onto the website so that the public can see exactly what we're doing on each of these programs. Thank you.
Alright, item 12, Public Analysis.
Now, discuss whatever you would like.
Sorry. Thank you for not adopting that, but I see that there is a definite need for a food truck ordinance in this township. I didn't want you to put a moratorium on it because, I mean, that would put two people out of business right away. And if, you know, I would think about putting a moratorium on it, just some of the wording in the document, all I need to hear is that for, with an exception of pre-approved special events, that's, that's all. And it doesn't have to say Scarfest or anything, but I know Scarfest is, you know.
Let me make this clear. I fully understand this. I do not say we would not, but I'm telling you that is the court order speaker itself. That language is not necessary, but we would address that when it comes to.
Sure, sure, sure. And I just wanted to say that, you know, you definitely do need a food truck ordinance in this township, and most townships do have them, so, I mean. And I just wanted to let everybody know that Scarfest is going to have a great year this year and we are donating to the Food Pantry this year, $2,500 in cash. We take that to Myers and Myers also doubles that donation, which the Food Pantry is going to get $5,000 this year from Scarfest, so that's something I just wanted to bring to this Board's attention. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hold on, Cal. Cal from the Board.
Actually, I was going to say this during public announcements, but I just wanted to thank everybody that came out for the community dinner, that helped out, that cooked and everything. We raised a lot of money and we also raised a lot of food for the Food Pantry. We ended up serving over 250 people in person and 100 people came to get carried out. So it was nice to have it back in place after 2018 since COVID, so hopefully next year we'll be even bigger and better and maybe we have to apply a different place to expand to, but that's okay.
Thank you for the job you did there.
And thanks to the Board members that paid and helped out too. That's it.
Anyone else? Alright, item 4, Mr. Greer.
I make a motion, Mr. Greer, at 7:18.
Second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Honnell, second by Trustee Gurley. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes?